I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the Constitution, as it is mine. We are required to uphold its standing on the Constitution under God, in the name of the Constitution, and to the end of this world.
Uh, so, fundraiser, uh, are they going to be a board of representatives? Large Foundation Foundation is kicking off, uh, the new year next week. Uh, we have, uh, a little bit of change to membership with the, the approving later this evening, the school board representative, which will be Christine Valenta, Dale Ferguson, and myself for this coming school year. And, uh, we do thank you for your support on the most recent fundraiser, raised about about three hundred dollars for the most. Thank you. We had a closed session at six o'clock before this meeting, the covered personnel, legal, and building and grounds. We will have another closed session afterwards for person on. Student council, is there anyone from student council on this evening? Go ahead, student council.
So, for the sake Killian's Food Pantry, we raised three hundred and ninety-seven dollars through the trick-or-treat drive-thru. And they just sent us an email to thank us. That's all.
Thank you so much. And we look forward to hearing from you next month.
Thank you.
Um, public comment, this point, we have, uh, we allow three minutes for public comment. We allow thirty minutes. It's on agenda items only for the first section, session. Is there anyone who wishes to do public comment this time? Is there anyone who wishes to do public comment on the agenda items this evening? Last call. So we'll move on. Um, we have no me, uh, minutes for this evening, they are coming for next month. Um, under personnel, can I get a motion for agenda number one under personnel?
Megan Simmons.
Kevin second. Can you just say your full names for new secretary?
Megan Webb.
Kevin Hagan, second. Simon first and a second. For discussion comments? All in favor, aye.
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 Right there. Given on the finances, number one through eighteen on the main agenda. Simon first and a second.
Deputy Department of Simmons.
Megan Martin, second.
Simon first and a second, um, four comments. So, none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed, nay. So that'll carry. Under programs, Mrs. Ross was going to present for us this evening.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'll try not to take too much time. Um, we are looking to make some course additions, modifications, and some deletions out of the course election manual that we have to. Um, we'll start with the newly proposed courses first, um, looking to, um, add an AP Calculus slash CHS Calculus two course. Um, this course would be for a full year. It would be a one credit at Mars and four college credits from Pitt University. Our current, um, AP Calculus course is AP Calculus one, so this would be kind of the next step in line for, for those students. Um, the pre-records if they are aligned with that, um, as well as if they just took the AP Calculus exam, they could also need the pre-records during that class. Um, the cost associated with this, um, is the, the only, um, difference from some of the other courses that I'm going to talk about, what covers the college level course and an AP course, I would ask for the teacher, um, that would be taking us on to get AP training from the AP Institute that happens over the summer. Um, and then, um, there is some training that happens with Pitt as well. I just want to share, I had a really great conversation with the CHS liaison from Pitt today. Um, we have been going back and forth, as I said, we already have one teacher, Mr. Sloan, who teaches a course through them. Um, and hoping over the next couple years, that you'll be seeing some other Pitt CHS addition courses, so continuing our relationship with PC three and the strong CHS courses we have there, and then hopefully be able to include some more CHS classes from Pitt. So this is kind of the next step in that direction. Um, this year, we would have a small number of students eligible to take this course, so I'm not even a hundred percent sure that we would have enough students to run the course for next year. Um, but there are a group of students that is in this year's current junior class who have progressed through math on their own at an accelerated rate. Um, and so they are interested, I want to see if we have enough interest to be able to offer it. If not, it is something that we will need moving forward, uh, that accelerated math track that's coming up through the middle school and the high school now, we need. Um, so there is a chance that we kind of added into the book this year, possibility that it runs next year, and then we might have a couple years break before it would run again with enough students, um, on that track for it. So that is the first addition. The next addition is an SAT and ACT prep course. That would be a semester elective credit. It would be worth point five credit, but it would be a pass fail course, so it would not affect a student's DPA or QPA. Um, the course would be very targeted for the individual students' needs for that course. Um, so I'm taking the PSAT scores and using resources to kind of hit what is needed for those students, as well as some general, um, review. It would take, um, two teachers, an English teacher and a math teacher, but they would switch. So the English teacher would have a group of students for nine weeks, the math teacher would have a group of students for nine weeks, and then they would switch for the second nine weeks to make it a semester course. Um, so it would be a semester-long class for those teachers, just with two different degrees of credit for each month. Um, I'm looking to add a civics and law class, and I will talk about the backend of this a little bit when we talk about course deletion. Um, but looking to add civics and law as a general elective in our social studies department. All of our students have to graduate with four credits of social studies, and the last credit they earn typically by taking a combination of a couple different elective courses. Looking to add this in as an option for students. Um, you can see the description there, kind of timely, it's just talking about citizenship, um, branches of the government, as well as just basic legal responsibilities, uh, so that student has kind of have an understanding of that. They talk a little bit about civics in our tenth grade American history course, but this would be a deeper dive into it, and when it's a little more applicable to the students, when they can actually get certificated, when they actually need to find out whether selective service, those types of things. Um, so we are looking to add that in. In our programming department, we'll be working some things, and we're looking to add two different electives, a foundations of Python programming course, and an introduction to programming course. The introduction to programming would kind of be reworking a little bit of our current visual basics in C++ course, and the foundations of Python would be a new addition to us for an introduction to a different language. Um, I am not going to pretend that I'm an expert in programming, uh, or computer science, uh, but there are obviously different languages, and we just want our students to have exposure to all of those before they would, um, head towards our AP computer science, which we offer two AP computer science courses. So those, um, two courses would kind of act as more introductory level courses, um, in that department. Moving on to modifications, um, we are looking, um, to have engineering by design. We kind of reworked and transitioned that curriculum to more of an advanced course, so it would be an advanced engineering by design course, which means it would carry the weighted, um, credit of an advanced course here at the high school. Um, the reality of this is, we have a couple engineering courses in our technology department, and this is one that we think that a lot of students who are choosing to go into engineering could benefit from, uh, but maybe they shy away from taking a little bit as they're taking other weighted classes, and in communication with other, um, both school districts and talking to kind of their programming area of this. Uh, this is really taking this course up a notch to the next level, where they'll be applying those hands-on, some skills that they've learned in some of the earlier engineering courses and manufacturing courses, and applying it to solving real-world problems, um, similar to what they would be asked to do, um, golf. Um, so really kind of giving them some of those practice and skills. And then the last, uh, modification I'm looking at is our current AP Calculus class. It's just titled AP Calculus right now. Um, but it is actually AP Calculus AB and the CHS Calculus one class. So we just want that name, um, to truly reflect what it actually is and what it has been for twenty-something years, um, because a lot of students wouldn't traditionally take AP Calculus AB and then go to AP Calculus BC, they may take one or the other, but since we are partnered with Pitt on both those courses, it's not just Calculus AB and BC, it's truly a Calculus one course and then a Calculus two course. And the Calculus one course will prepare you for the AP AB exam, and the Calculus two course would prepare you for the BC exam. Um, so it really will give, um, some of those students two full Pitt college calculus credits, uh, when they leave you. So that's just adjusting the current course name to better describe what is actually happening in that course. And then finally, the deletions of the existing courses. Um, it starts with the programming courses. It does look, um, like there's a lot of courses going away, um, but what I'm looking at is the visual basics one and two, the C++ one and two, and the web technologies one and two, kind of taking those down to the basics. Some of the, that content will be added into that new introduction to programming course that we would be offering. Um, and then the other ones we would be reworking over the next couple years to kind of rebuild some of those programs a little bit stronger. Um, so kind of condensing for the time though, being to then refocus and move forward in that department. So those kind of all fall into just a realignment of programming, um, to focus on the different languages, offering the Python and so on and so forth. Um, then if you go to page seven, uh, this one I do wanted to take a minute to speak about, we are looking to remove warranties from our course selection manual. I'll be honest, I think this is a wonderful course that has served our students and our community well for many years. Um, Mr. Rose, who has taught the course for years, can say it best. Um, it was designed to teach the importance of beauty and honor to our students, and I think it did an excellent job and does an excellent job in doing that. Um, but again, just with the realignment of the social studies department, I'm looking to offer that civics and law class. We're hoping that that class will kind of pick up some of that, those big shoes to fill. Um, and, and I don't know if anybody could do it justice the way that Mr. Rose has. We will find out, the second semester it is still running, and another teacher will be teaching it for the second semester of this year. Um, but looking to kind of replace that with that new social studies elective that I proposed in the first place. So I said I wouldn't talk a lot, but I'm sorry, because it's a habit of mine. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll be.
Okay, yeah, the question. The SAT ACT prep, you know, of Saturday. But I guess, because it's pass fail, is, is it, is it an option for freshman sophomores, juniors, and seniors?
So it would be an option to anybody, but I've been talking with the guidance counselors, it makes most sense for those potential weapon traders to be looking at it, so that's why the guidance counselors would be kind of guiding the students in taking it, because it will make a lot of sense for them to take it maybe after they've taken the PSATs, like the ACTs, so they have a good idea of what they need to focus on. And then, um, would a student have the option of taking it more than once? I guess they could, absolutely, yes.
If it's being, it's being pass fail.
If it's being pass fail, they're not counting towards, uh, the GPA, absolutely. So if they take it and they still want to see more improvement, then yes, they would be able to take that again.
Right, okay. And then my second question is on the Python. Did we, did we have somebody on staff who?
We do, so Mr. Violin, um, who is a math teacher, but has also been teaching our AP computer science classes, has some experience, um, in that world, he has some minor degrees in college, he's close to it, he took a lot of those courses, he was interested in. Uh, and I can share that I know a lot of tech executives have also been taking those courses, either robotic than Python and those sorts of things.
Well, it's so versatile, and, and I'll tell you, even my college-age students who are in the business school, they're being required to take Python class just as part of prerequisite to get through the, through the program, regardless of what discipline you are within the school. So it's, you know, it's just really good background to have, and I'm really excited to see this.
And as we, and then, as we recall, like I said, in that department, and kind of rebuild, are you there, um, Pitt offering in that department, it'd be interesting to explore.
Well, and it might be, as we have that robotics class at the middle school, it might make sense to start thinking about it as a, as a longer sequence, and, you know, get off to really strong stuff, but maybe consider starting it a little sooner than the middle school and toward something downward too.
Absolutely.
But, great job, I see, this is, this is, this is actually the, the best possible presentation we've had in a really long time, this is fantastic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple questions, the, um, engineering by design. Yes, Lindsay, is that, um, perhaps, is it a semester class or a full year? Because it didn't, I might have missed it, I might have missed it down here.
This one is, I want to make sure that I don't miss it. Uh, because it's not changing from where it currently has been, um, so it is currently a full-year course, and it would say that. Um, but it would obviously be different than what it currently offers to, to move it up to be a.
That's great, good to see the district spending some more time to focus on, again, curriculum, because that's something that's a great opportunity for development within the district. Um, and AP Calculus continues to be a four-year credit class.
Yes. And so moving forward, that is something to note as well, our current CHS offerings to the BC three are all semester-long courses, as we moved to other providers, that is different with different providers, so if we are looking at any Pitt CHS courses, those would be four-year class.
And then just one last que, uh, question. For Python, do you envision needing a different resources? And if so, then it would be good to stop at that sometime, not necessarily to make that.
Yeah, the teacher, um, has been kind of doing a lot of the research on it, like I said, I am not going to pretend to be a programming expert, uh, so the teacher has been doing a lot of the research on that, he's confident with what, what we're asking for with the proposal, which is pretty minimal, he says there's a lot of online resources, um, available through CMU and other, um, colleges that provide some of that for, for high schools to use. So he's confident with what he has so far, but the teacher will be spending time actually next week, um, on that in-service day, and then in the other available time I have with them, before the end of the school year, um, writing curriculum. So as he starts to dig into it, if anything were contained, we'll, we'll have to talk to him.
That's, uh, again, super excited about that as well. That's, uh, that's a computer language being taught at, at the high school level, at many other schools as well, so great opportunity for our students to have some experience with that before they, uh, enter college.
Absolutely.
Do you want to say to the Pitt courses, the credits were easily transferable and increasing the math options, and thanks to the teachers for their flexibility in changing curriculum, and re, I'm sure that rewriting all of this is a lot of work.
Absolutely.
And it's safe to see that they are being as spontaneous as they would be.
Yeah, they have been wonderful in helping me kind of figure out what path to go, as I should. Not an expert in every area, there's no possible way for me to do so, so, um, the teachers really are kind of the experts in those areas, and have definitely helped stagnate on what makes the most sense moving forward, and what to condense, and so on and so forth.
Thank you, Ben.
So, the programs, uh, hi, number one, can I get a first and a second?
Christine Valenta, first.
Kevin, second. Any other board questions or comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Senator Kerry. Under other, number, under others, number one through six, how does this consider?
So, Neil, Dale, everything?
Christine, fourth is a second.
Simon first and second, um, four comments, questions?
Joe, well, the resolution, the service project for, like, the recent, um, I, I don't know what it stands on, but it'd be great if you could post that prominently on the district website. It, I believe, unless something changed, the language is pretty consistent, the, the, the same resolution that we passed, I think, a year ago.
Yes.
Right? But I do believe that Jill updated some of the financial impacts to make it more current. So it'd be great if people, um, to check that out and understand sort of why this is super important for public schools, and pretty much.
Thank you, Joe. Any other board questions, comments? Under other, number one through six, I don't know, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Senator Kerry. So moving on, the agenda then, um, with the public comment. We allow the next thirty minutes for public comment, giving you three minutes. Does anyone want to do public comment this evening? We're on to public comment, does anyone wish to do public comment this time? Last call for public comment. I see none, so we'll go to association, is there a representative of the association this evening? Um, let's, let's see, you. Is he going to represent the association this evening? Did he raise his hand?
Yes.
Mr. Black, you're representing the association?
Can you hear me okay? Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes, I'm speaking, uh, on behalf, Sharon couldn't make it this evening, um, so they just asked me to say a few words. Um, so I just wanted to say, I, thinking back in March when we were first, uh, online and, and the struggles we had done, and, and, uh, we're doing asynchronous and how we've come along right now, just a reminder to, to what a degree that was just the work that teachers had done to make that happen. And it's amazing, we think about now that we're in synchronous learning with our own personal expensive times and, and the time we put into learn technology, uh, how things are working well. And so it's been really exciting as we started out this week to have students again, not on a computer screen, but actually inside of the classroom. Um, it's, there's a connection, yes, over the screen, but it's not the same thing as when you can, to see every, you know, inflection on their faces, you're, do they get something? Do they not understand it that you, you miss on the computer screen? So I just want to say on behalf of teachers, how happy we are, but, um, at the same time, how concerned I am, because I see, um, as we're excited about this time, and through Mrs. Ross's presentation, we're so excited about new programs and developments in the technology curriculum. Um, I'm also nervous, and I speak on behalf of teachers, we're nervous, because, uh, we're feeling the impacts of, of the cuts that we've had in the past. We feel in the impacts in terms of being over a hundred and ninety days still without a contract. As an immediate concern, for instance, speaking at the high school, right now, through a lot of scrambling creativity, I've been able to establish, and my fellow colleagues have established, a safe, uh, seating arrangement for the students. But that simply will not last. It will not last because we're less, less than thirty percent of attendance, most of the students are on LSI. It won't be long before I'll hit the breaking point, and the, the issue will come down simply to bodies. We're going to miss Mr. Petrus, we're going to miss Mr. Case, we're going to miss Ms. Thurber in the high school, because it, it removes options for where else we can physically, what spaces where we can put the students. Um, so as we're excited, my point being is we're excited about the future, we have to remember, we have to invest in that future, and the teachers are, are, what are making these things happen on the ground. So what's going to make the technology changes we're talking about happen on the ground? And I, it would be heartbreaking to find out that as the next year comes, there's been furloughs or losses, and all these, these plans, which sound so fantastic, do not come to fruition again because of the planning. So we're excited, um, we're really happy to see that, 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 you know, the way things are moving and that the plan is successful. I'm particularly proud, and I think I can say this, that not one case of COVID nineteen has been connected to person-to-person, um, transmission in, in the school building. Maybe I'm wrong to say that, but we've been working really, really hard to make that possible. But, um, I'm hoping as we in two days meet again for negotiations, there is, there's a realistic appreciation for what teachers have, have done on the ground, day by day, to make these things happen. Uh, thank you for your time, and, and also I want to thank MAE for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak to you.
Mr. Black, I reached out to Joe Graff about having a board ten-person association meeting. Um, do they have any dates, or is someone going to reach back after me?
Um, I know that's been discussed, so, uh, they will, they will get back to you.
Okay, yeah, we'll start to get in here in January, early, early February.
Okay, I'm sure, in fact, I'm sure, right, as we speak right now, um, Mr. Graff is, is listening and, and will follow up on that.
All right, thank you so much.
Sure, you guys have a great night.
As an association administration, Dr. Jersey?
I'm going to piggyback off what Mr. Black had to say, um, we returned, obviously, this week in the safest manner possible. Um, I've had several conversations, uh, with Mr. Graff, and I just want to say very emphatically to the teachers and to Mr. Graff, thank you so much for the support and coming back and the motivation to do well, and the positivity, because the positivity has definitely been there. Um, I was planning to get out of the building yesterday and, uh, just waylaid and again today, but I, I want to try to get out and, and try to see more of what's happening. But what I've seen so far, at least around, um, it's a PC and, and the other areas that I've been around, it's, uh, teachers smiling despite a lot of stress, and I know it's there, but, uh, Mr. Black said, said some great comments, I think, to, to teachers, well, has a brace coming back, and, um, they've been very positive, I expect you continue to do that. And I just want to continue to say, we will continue to keep everyone as safe as possible. Um, it is a little nerve-wracking opening when you're in substantial, but as Mr. Black pointed out, there is a lot of research saying that those cases are not necessarily, it's not scientific, but pretty good research out there that basically says schools are not complaining with spread. So if the community keeps doing what they're doing, um, parents keep helping us to, uh, you know, monitor their children and, and try to keep them as safe as possible, and keep them safe if they're in a social gathering, I think, I think will be pretty good, but, uh, again, thank you to the teaching staff for the positivity, and to everybody else for, uh, their support, received a lot of supportive emails from the community over the past week. And we will remain open as long as we possibly can, without compromising safety. Um, certainly, I thought that's still a number one priority. And just a reminder that, um, staffing, because of COVID being so prevalent in the community, um, we, we may not have positive cases in school, and I keep repeating this to people, we have the charts on the website showing how many cases it takes to close a school, but because there's still individuals in the community becoming ill, sometimes that impacts our staff members who will remain home in quarantine. Um, we are allowing those staff members to keep from home, as long as they're physically able to do so, but sometimes it becomes a case where if we're open, teachers willing to work from home, they're in, um, some shortages may, may constitute a problem, so we're going to continue to monitor that. So, thanks again to the teaching staff, to the graph, the union, and for, uh, the positivity and coming back, greatly appreciated. Um, another thing I wanted to share this evening, um, I'm not sure if the community's aware, but January is always recognized in Pennsylvania, um, as school director recognition month, and it, it basically gives us an opportunity to take a pause and have the opportunity of to honor our, our local board members for all of their efforts. I'm asking if the entire Marjorie's, will the community please take the time, not only this evening, but also over the next, even several months? It shouldn't just be a monthly thing. Um, this is the month we honor it, but thank you, Marjorie, sort of directors for their hard work and dedication, as they continue to make our district, and our district's true success their number one priority. Um, one thing to point out, that I, I continue to say, I've been doing this for thirty-one years, and I've always looked at board members, and I've been amazed, like, wow, you know, many of you are working so hard, um, in raising families, or, or dealing with your own personal, um, employment, and then you also come in here voluntarily. Um, and it's amazing, I, I sometimes find myself getting tired in evenings after meetings and realizing you're probably more tired than I am, because you're also working, so, and you're not getting paid to do that. So I think it's important that, um, going to school director recognition month, we, we applaud your efforts for voluntarily stepping up, and you don't necessarily need to do that, especially a year like this, making awfully hard decisions as you navigate through, you know, not only this budget year, but also with this COVID pandemic. making awfully hard decisions as you navigate through, you know, not only this budget year, but also with this COVID pandemic. Um, so I'll keep it certainty, but I have certainty. I just want to thank all of you for all that you do. And I'm sure that the community feels the same way. And um it's easy to take a look at board members and, and look at decisions, but it's an amazing amount of time that you put into the dedication. So we thank you for all that you've done and that we'll continue to do. So happy school director recognition month, and I hope we can say it to everyone. Um, the last thing I want to do is I want to welcome Beauty Dennis this evening. Beauty, who is off-screen, she can't see. She was hired at the last board meeting. She is our new board secretary. Um, she is my secretary, confidential secretary. She started yesterday. And I just want to welcome you, know it's new and um think we'll have a, a, a great opportunity to grow together and, and build a great team and that's what we're trying to do here. So just want to acknowledge you're here tonight and welcome. And with that being said, I, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Dr. Durs. Uh, Dr. McMan?
Um, just to, this is the time we're here that we would be gearing up and getting ready for our kindergarten free pay event. Just want to make you know, because during COVID, we will not be hosting the kindergarten preview this year. Uh, stuff will, you know, I'm going to give you some dates and you want to take a look, we're putting up flyers. So I'm just one of the people that I got there, which kind of surprised me about this. We will have our kindergarten registration packets available for parents to pick up in our admin office on February twenty fifth and twenty sixth. And what makes those dates specifically important are for those of you who are interested in the kindergarten lottery, we're looking like I am kindergarten session. We will host a kindergarten lottery again this year. So when you pick up your packet at the registration office on the twenty fifth and the twenty sixth of February, you may then pick up a lottery ticket. There will be only two days that lottery tickets will be available. Uh, we typically would give out our lottery ticket on kindergarten preview day. And then we would give a one additional day for the pickup. And then that following Monday, we would invite the Addams County Police uh to come and pull the lottery ticket. I do not pull the lottery ticket. No one pulled it from Marjorie's school because it pulled that lottery ticket. So what we will do is February twenty fifth and twenty sixth, you will get parents opportunity to pick up their registration packet in the admin office. Also, we'll give them that opportunity to get a lottery ticket on those dates. And then on the March the first, Monday, March first, Addams County Police uh will pull the lottery number and we will post it on the website. Then moving into the month of March, on March sixteenth, we will host our lottery registration day in the San Fernando School. Um, in the same fashion as we always have, uh, we go make flowers up the bed and we'll have, and we'll be pushing the ballot more because there's a lot of dates here. And then after the lottery registration day, which of course will be on April sixteenth, Friday, April sixteenth, in the central, it's been amazing. We will then move into the month of May and we will post one day of a free pay assessment. We typically in the past will have two days of free pay assessment. We're going to be one day of a free pay assessment and that is going to be on Friday, May seventh, and that will be conducted in the primary system. And again, this is a lot of information just to kind of give out here. We will put this out in writing. We'll have this in the e-communicator and on the month of May so that everybody can be aware of these dates. But so kindergarten free pay folks, get ready. So the twenty fifth and the twenty sixth, come to the admin building to pick up your registration packet, get your lottery ticket, and we'll get that process started because it will be August twenty twenty one to October. Thank you.
Hold on. Thank you, Dr. McMan. Um, Mrs. Fain?
Hi, Dr. Fain, thank you.
Um, Morris?
Well, nothing really, but uh since the technology's been down well, we hope to have a lot of this stuff assembled and uh very quickly start innovating more. So keep that in consideration.
Thank you. Uh, Dylan?
Um, I just want to echo what uh Dr. Durs and Mr. Black had said about the uh, the efforts that everyone put in this year. It's absolutely phenomenal. I just see the elementary school building and see how hard these people are working, sports staff, teachers, everybody is working so hard. But also the board, well, Dr. Durs offered to demonstrate their leadership through this year. It has many, it's been rough for everybody, but with their constant, and you guys constantly booking the things and guiding in the right direction. Thank you guys so much. But I can't stand up my staff and how hard they're working. It's just, it's amazing the efforts they're putting in and they're true professionals and it's greatly appreciated on my end. It makes my job a lot easier, which isn't, you know, it's not easy, but makes it a lot easier when they're willing to come in and, and um really, really put forth that effort for the kids. But also seeing the kids back in the building, um, just walking up down the hallway, talking with them. Are you guys excited to be back? Yay! And they're just so excited. They're coming off the bus. It's like a birthday of school over again for them. So yesterday, it seemed a little tired coming in, a lot of sleepy eyes, you know, sleeping in a little bit. But uh they came in and today, didn't skip a beat. It's just like they picked up where they left off. So um it wasn't like the first day yesterday, but they picked it up today and it was a great job. The cafeteria's a little excited yesterday with the kids, seeing their friends for the first time again for a while. So um they got their other person and it's just really good to see the kids back in the building. I definitely said to some of the kids, it's very eerie in the building without kids here. Hearing teachers speak to healthy classrooms and not hearing the kids in the hustle and bustle and asking questions that suffer in their desk and that sort of thing. So I'm really, really glad to have them back in the building and um teachers are very happy to have them back. Well, as Mr. Black said, it's one thing to teach through a kid on screen, but having that personal connection, you just, you just can't replicate that personally. So I want to thank you guys, thank them for their effort and glad everybody's back. It's very glad.
And I see. Um, Mrs. Ross, what?
Um, I feel a lot of what's been said already. I do want to give a special um thank you to the teachers at the high school. Um, as we know, obviously, they've been working their tails off all year, but especially this week, I think it's our true uh first time viewing hybrid, a true hybrid model. Um, at the beginning of the year, we were primarily in person and just had a few students um at home on the other end of the computer. Um, but this week has kind of been a little bit of a flip of that at the high school. Um, maybe fifty fifty in the class, but um so this has kind of been our true, true week, uh, coming back, remembering how used the technology that they maybe didn't have to use for the last two months. And then um really having kind of a, a hybrid model with, with kids in both places with a lot of expectations. So I just want to commend them for stepping up to the site and handling it as true professionals on top of midterm week. Um, so it has been a, a very strange week here at the high school and I want to thank the students. I know it's stressful for them as well, um, especially having midterm week. Please know that the teachers are aware of the stress and the anxiety that students are feeling or making modifications and adaptations to their tests and, um, and expectations with the students. So students, reach out to your teachers if you need anything. Uh, the guidance counselors are there to help too. So um just thank you to everybody. Thank you guys for uh for depreciation month, every month. I, I say you guys don't prepare enough for this because you don't prepare anything and you work overtime hours. Uh, so thank you for everything that you guys do for us as well.
Thank you. That's conclusion of administration. Four comments for this evening. Ms. Ferguson?
I just wanted to echo what everyone's saying, guys, I'm so appreciative for the hard work everyone's put in. And sports staff, the teachers, the administrators for getting the kids back to the base and just the positivity everyone's bringing in. It's just exciting to have them back and the kids are excited. So thanks, everybody.
This is Megan. Thank you to the secretary, the custodians, the maintenance workers, the care professionals, the nurses, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, the teachers, the administrators for taking them back. I feel like getting on top of my house with not having all these tiny humans home cameras in every room of my house. So thank you for taking them back.
Not to echo all the same groups, but again, thank you to the whole community. Um, I love this, you know, some of the comments that are made, especially Mr. Black. Thank you very much for that. I guess the most important thing for us as community is the positivity is contagious. Um, and it does come from everybody, everybody in the community. You know, we will be as we act and uh our students will feel as we act. So um just thank everybody for their hard work and that everybody can continue to work together as a team to keep that positivity for our community and for our students.
And, and yes, to all of that, I don't think it needs to be repeated, but I don't think anyone disagrees with all of that. I just wanted to say a thank you to Mutrician Inc. for the lucky weekend of school director month. We enjoyed a nice dinner um on Mutrician this evening and it was nice to, to break bread and it was a bit of a working dinner, but um we uh we appreciate them remembering us.
Any other board comments? We will be staying for a short closed session for personnel afterward. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn? Kevin, I guess, no move?
Down the left second.
First and second, all in favor I? So thank you. Adjourn.